Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the new and improved Dave Roberts City Council Chambers. We have technical additions to the meeting this evening, and we hope that you all will appreciate that. Welcome to the regular November 19th meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council, and we will ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you very much. We also want to welcome the people who will be watching us on Metro Cable or on their computers, and remind everybody that there is an opportunity for public speaking, and we hope that you will all fill out this very nice speaker card in the back of the room. So Stacy, do you want to announce the playback schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, November 21st at noon, and Thursday, November 22nd at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
This feels like a King's Game where everybody is staring at the big screens instead of the people on the floor. So, okay, we are going to begin our meeting tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have asked our Neighborhood Services Director Carrie Simpson to lead us in the pledge. And then we invite you to remain standing for an invocation from Julie Steinbach from United Methodist Church of Rancho Cordova. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God Almighty Father, we are gathered here this evening to make the city of Rancho Cordova a great place to live and play. Guide us in making thoughtful, honorable decisions for the citizens of this community. Help us set the example of what a city should be by our compassion and understanding of our community members. In a world of chaos, let us be the bright light in the storm. And we ask you, Lord, to also be with all those that have been affected by the campfire, especially Paradise. They have suffered enormous loss and devastation. Please help support them get through this horrible tragedy. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Several of us know the mayor of Paradise, and our hearts go out to them. We will begin with presentations, as we always do, and I will turn it over to Stacy Delaney and her staff.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember. I am Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. Tonight, we are presenting ceremonial checks to several organizations that were approved for grant funding from the city's Community Enhancement Fund in fiscal year 1819. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, entertainment, civic engagement, and quality of life, while continuing to make our city a safe and inviting place to live, work, and have fun. Mayor and councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their ceremonial checks. The first check being presented this evening is for the Rancho Cordova Parade Committee to organize and put on the 2018 Holiday Light Parade.
Yes.
This is the second year of the parade, which provides a unique community event for city residents. Attendees will see illuminated floats, dancing elves, and high-tech lighting effects combined with holiday traditions and music. This year's parade is on Saturday, December 8th, at 5:30 p.m., and Jerry Jewell is accepting the check tonight for $19,660.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
The second check this evening is for the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership to establish and host career center services at both Kenny and Cordova High Schools. The funding provides high school students in Rancho Cordova the opportunity to explore career pathways, develop career plans, and build career readiness. Robert Sanger and Renee John are accepting the check for $25,000. The third check is for Meals on Wheels by ACC for the purpose of expanding the number of meals provided to seniors in Rancho Cordova. This program funding allows seniors living in Rancho the opportunity to receive nutritional support and meal services in order to stay independent. This program funding provides support over a two-year period. David Morikawa is accepting the check for $27,000. The fourth check this evening is for the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce for the continuation of the Explore Rancho Cordova program, which extends a warm welcome to new residents, new hires in the city, and visitors to Rancho Cordova. Welcome bags filled with information about the city and its amenities are delivered to more than 1,200 people each year through this program. Diane Rogers is accepting the check for $50,000. And the last check this evening is for pro-youth and families to provide three different programs in the city of Rancho Cordova. The Youth at City Council program, Summer at City Hall, and a community investment project. And these programs all help build civically involved young people who become involved stakeholders here in Rancho Cordova. They're accepting applications now for the program that will start in January, so interested people should apply by November 29th, and that's for anyone in the age group of 13 to 18. Stacy Anderson, Demetria Stone, and a pro-youth graduate is accepting the check for $70,000. So yes, the last group that participated in Summer at City Hall, which was over the summer of 2018, they came up with different ideas for the civic center. So it was great to see a whole array of ideas that someday might be incorporated.
Presented.
Yes. So thank you.
Okay, our second presentation tonight will be to Diane Rogers, again, from the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and declaring November 24th as Small Business Saturday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Small Business Saturday is a big deal for the city of Rancho Cordova, and so we're here with Diane Rogers from the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and we have a proclamation given in recognition of Small Business Saturday. And I will read the relevant parts of the proclamation. So whereas the city of Rancho Cordova celebrates Small Business Saturday on November 24th, 2018, and the contribution small businesses make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and they are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. So it's an enormous impact on the economy that's often overlooked. Whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of employees in the private sector in the United States, and 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And 73% of consumers reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday and did so with friends and family. The most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community. That's about 64%. And whereas the city of Rancho Cordova supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, preserve our communities, and I would say add to our quality of life. Advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday and urge Rancho Cordova residents and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and a witness thereof, our mayor has signed and will shortly affix a seal to the documents.
Oops.
But here, I will pass that on to you, and if you would like to make any remarks on behalf of small businesses in Rancho Cordova, we would love to talk about that topic.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, couched between Black Friday and Cyber Monday, we have Small Business Saturday. But it is a wonderful opportunity to have all businesses be recognized that week, and we do have an enormous number here in Rancho Cordova of small businesses. And I'd say, from the chamber's perspective, probably 65 or 70% of our chamber membership would fall into that category. And we're doing at the chamber a couple of things. We're doing some outreach with some special coupons and discounts and programs for our small businesses that are focused directly on Small Business Saturday. So thank you for this, and we appreciate your support.
You say 2/3 of your membership?
Probably 60-plus percent.
Wow, yeah.
Depending on whose definition, because the state of California and the United States have entirely different definitions of what. They think anything under $1 million is a small business, and that's, awful lot of people would say that's a lot bigger business. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So now, drumroll, we get a presentation from the California Capitol Air Show Board of Gentlemen.
And lady. And lady. Yep. Lucky for you, this is not all of the Board of Directors. But good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager, and the city clerk. I'm Terrence McNamara. I'm the incoming chair for the California Capitol Air Show Board of Directors. Currently, I'm the appointee of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, which you may have just heard from, and I've been on the board since 2009. So I'd like to introduce some of my fellow board members. Tim Murphy, an executive committee member, he's serving as the treasurer and on the hospitality committee. Matt Cicado, he leads the community engagement team delivering youth programs that run throughout the year, as well as doing the educational and hospital visitations with the jet teams during the week of the show.
Bring back the drones.
And Maria Niedstat on our communications and volunteer support teams for the air show.
Good evening, council. We'd like to kick off our presentation this evening with a short recap video of the 2018
It's amazing. I've been to the air show so many times before, I think this is the best year by far.
I think that one deserves a tiny round of applause, huh? It was a great year for an air show, and as you all know, and hopefully our members of the community know, the city is one of two presenting sponsors of the California Capitol Air Show. 2018 was a special commemorative year, and it featured, as you just saw, the return of the U.S. Air Force Thunderbirds. The weekend paid tribute to Mather's 100th anniversary, as well as the city's 15th birthday. We kicked off with the Air Show After Dark, which was the Friday night show that featured the pyrotechnic and aerobatic performances, fireworks display that was partially funded by the city, and a live concert. What's not in my notes here was that Cyrus got to ignite the wall of fire, which was a very exciting moment for him.
And his hair's almost grown back.
And his eyebrows. So it also was the first viewing of the Mather 100 Museum, which you also saw in the video recap, and of course, that celebrated Mather's centennial.
Madam Mayor, city council, Mr. Manager, city clerk, assistant city clerk, as you know, the air show is a nonprofit, so the revenues allow us to not only put on the air show each year, but do things throughout the year, starting with a day at the airport here in our Sacramento County. We have career field trips, teaching young people about STEM, Positive Altitude, the Drone Expo, which I know we had a lot of fun at. These are a lot of things that are happening outside of what the city is doing. On top of that, visiting our Mather VA Hospital, children's hospitals, the Shwiners Hospital, and other school visits. That's not it. At the show, we also have a STEM Expo. We're hosting 30-something Make-A-Wish kids and their families. We also have a Kitty Hawk Pavilion for students, Launchpad Experience to excite kids into STEM. And this year, we welcomed a group of Girl Scouts, showing them what is the power of STEM and women in the power of flight. So the California Capitol Air Show is not only becoming something awe-inspiring in the air and on the ground, it's becoming a year-round event, and it's known throughout the air show network of being a STEM powerhouse. And this year, we also had the fortunate ability of inviting several local WWII veterans and their families to honor them here in Rancho Cordova.
Good evening, council. Just a couple of things that I'd like to discuss are some of the stats behind the air show and the economic benefit that comes to this community through our providing the show. Our performers utilized over 927 hotel room nights with the air show this year, and the Thunderbirds jet team reported to their leadership 120,000 spectators for the show, including people from 34 states and 14 other countries. Part of the impact that the air show has, in addition to the tax revenues that come from the visitors, it's also the giving back to the local community each year through the charitable donations and the revenue share that programs supporting other nonprofits receive through the air show. This year in 2018, we shared $49,800 to local charities. Over the history of the air show, through the revenues that we've received, we provided over 146 scholarships to students that are either interested in the aviation or STEM-related industries. As far as the patriotism that typically comes with having a jet team, our military recruiters reported record results this year with people interested in going into the armed forces. And as evidence that the show continues to grow and capture the wonder of the local community, in 2018, we had 40% of attendees who reported that they had never been to the show before, and 27% of these attendees have never been to any air show before, showing that the California Capitol Air Show is really gaining ground with recreation opportunities in our region. And as you know, we couldn't put on this show without the help of members of this community. Because we had the Friday night show, typically our volunteers over the weekend, the average volunteer works between 13 to 21 hours, but because of the air show, most of our core volunteers work between 23 to 27 hours to deliver this event for our guests. So it's a cumulative effort. You provide us with support, and the community provides the air show with support as well.
So 2018 was an exciting year for the California Capitol Air Show, but you might ask, what's next? So 2019 plans are underway, and we're excited to announce that in 2019, we will be welcoming the, let me get this right, the U.S. Navy Blue Angels. They're coming, yeah, it's very exciting. Yes, you can clap for that. We all like to see them fly. They'll be flying into the city for the air show, which will take place on October 5th and 6th of next year.
This is their favorite part, you know. So over the last 13 years, the air show has become part of the fabric of our region, and we absolutely couldn't do it without you, the city of Rancho Cordova, and all of you in the room. We think that our partnership helps amplify Rancho Cordova's attractiveness as a wonderful community in which to live, work, and play. So thank you for giving us a few minutes this evening to share this with you, and we're going to leave with a small token of our esteem, both a signed poster from all of our performers, so an air show signed poster, and as well as a lithograph from the United States Air Force Thunderbirds. I'll let you guys figure out how to divide those up later.
Can you come down for a photo?
You gonna go back over there?
Yeah. One, two, three. Oh, that's so good. Okay, one more. Smile, people. Okay, one, two, three. That's so good. Okay, we got it. This is our end.
Keep saying that. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you all. My goodness gracious. Okay, continuing with the celebration. We have a colleague who has a birthday on the 25th before we meet again, and so if you were lucky enough to be born at Thanksgiving, then you might be a little thankful for having another birthday. So.
Wait, wait. Nobody's ever brought that up. Were you actually born on Thanksgiving?
I think I was born the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
But it falls there. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The day before Thanksgiving. So what happened was, I was born, and then the nation had a day of Thanksgiving. Just to be clear.
No one's ever brought that up, so there are days that it is on your birthday.
It's bound to be.
Yeah. Cool.
Bob, do you want to lead us in a song? Or Garrett wants to lead us in a song.
You know Garrett wants to.
Garrett wants to lead us in a song.
You know Garrett wants to.
All righty.
All right, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David. Born on Thanksgiving. Happy birthday to you.
Wow.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Bob, I particularly appreciate the harmony you put into that. And for the background singers who we hired for the occasion who are offstage, thank you very much. Well done.
Okay. Now, we are going to turn to public comment, and citizens wishing to address the board on any matter that is not on the agenda are welcome to do that at this point. We will offer you three minutes, and these will be the people who have signed up on the speaker card. And remember that for items that are not on the agenda, we cannot take action, but we will definitely direct you to a staff person or schedule this item for a hearing in the future if it's something that needs to be heard and can't be solved any other way. So Stacy, do we have a speakers?
Yes, I have eight speaker cards. The first speaker is Anil, if you'd like to come forward.
Oh, Anil, come on.
Following Anil will be Angel Ball.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, city staff, and my fellow citizens. Would like to express our deepest condolence to Mr. Donaltary for his loss, and we are heartbroken in our thoughts and prayers with you. I've experienced here, city is giving a lot of things to the community. I think now it's our responsibility to give community to back. So today, I got a check to present to the Cordova Community Food Locker to make our Thanksgiving happy in our community. And last couple of years, we tried to do this one. This morning, I called Maria and Mr. Walter that we want to donate $500, but sorry that I couldn't keep it as a $500 commitment. My community members overwhelmingly poured another $500 on top of it, so I got $1,000 checks to our community food locker to celebrate Thanksgiving.
Anil, that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Today, I'm accompanied with my, two of my colleagues from the community, Sirish and Raghu Chawali, to present the check to Cordova Community Locker.
Would you like to introduce them?
Sirish.
Introduce Siri and her husband.
Yeah. You all know Siri Pulipati. She recently ran an election for the Cordova Community, Cordova Parks and Recreation District.
Right.
And her husband Raghu Chawali is also here. And if council can join for a photo app, that will be great to show the community.
And if Council can join for a photo app, that will be great to show the community.
Good evening. My name is Angel Ball. I'm a resident of the City of Rancho Cordova. Good evening, Mayor Budge, Vice Mayor McGarvey, City Council, City Staff. Thank you, Mayor Budge, and Councilmember Gatewood and Sander for speaking with us after the November 5th meeting regarding our concerns. Cyrus, thank you for letting us know there will be a workshop study session on Neighborhood Services priorities in 2019. I'd also like to be a merit made aware of the meeting date as soon as it's available. Tonight, my focus is on the growing number of vehicles that are non-op and lawn parking in my neighborhood. I was able to bring a few pictures. As you look at the pictures, ask yourself, does this look attractive to you, and would you like to live in this neighborhood? On the left of the photo is the car that's actually parking on the dirt lawn area. There are normally two cars parked there. Across the street, which I don't have a photo of, there's another car that parks on the lawn.
So there's normally a four-car lineup?
Yeah.
Two in the driveway and two on the dirt?
The next photo, this vehicle is not registered and parks on gravel, and based on the condition, I would say it's been there for a little while. Next photo, this is a non-op van in the driveway. There is space in the driveway for the car that's parked underneath the tree, and the car that's parked underneath the tree is also parked on dirt lawn. Next photo, I'm really couldn't get a very good picture of this, but if you look where the black truck is, it's a single-car driveway, and that truck has been there for a long time with no plates, no front bumper. The white car is parked under the tree in the dirt lawn area. Next photo, and then this is just, the blue car is parked in the single-car driveway, and the black car is parked on the dirt lawn. There are so many vehicles in my neighborhood that are parking on their lawn. These vehicles have gone unnoticed for 11 months. I need to ask you, can vehicles park on dirt, gravel, and lawn? Do our code or ordinances allow non-op and unregistered vehicles to be parked in driveways or parking lots? I've asked these questions of Neighborhood Services by email on January 5th, May 14th, August 17th, September 26th, and as of today, I've not received an answer. I look forward to more conversations with City Council and City Staff on these topics. This has got to be addressed and cleaned up. Thank you.
So Angel, Angel.
Yes.
Have you given all these to Neighborhood Services for your ride-along next week?
I have not.
Are you planning to show them?
I'm absolutely going to show Ryan Paylor every single thing, not just this. I can't just limit it to this.
Well, sure.
But he'll see them all.
So, okay. So is it just you going, or are there several people from VINS going?
It's just me and him for now. I thought I would bring it to your attention, because quite frankly, when I talk to City Staff, they say they work at the direction of City Council. So it's important for me that you know what's going on where I live, so that when an issue comes up and they say, oh, well, we need to go work on weed abatement, well, no, you need to stay working on non-op cars and cars parked on lawns. So that's why I want to bring these issues to you.
Great. So we expect you will do that on your ride-along?
Absolutely.
Super. Okay.
One more thing. Since you engaged me, I do want to also let you know, either at another City Council or at the workshop, we do have solutions to these problems. We're not just bringing these to, you know, continue to be a pain, but we have solutions, and we would like to bring those to you also.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Linda, can I just make one comment? If somebody on City Staff is saying that they report to the Council, that's a real problem for me. All City Staff report to the City Manager, and the City Council has one employee. So however that's being construed, and I don't know how that's being conveyed, but in general, coming to us as your first resort to remedy a situation is not something that residents should be instructed to do.
Thank you. Point was well taken. One comment related to the workshop that we had mentioned. The workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, January 8th at 4:00 p.m. So this is the first council meeting in, the first workshop in 2019, and our goal was to start a discussion, the dialogue, related to some of the code enforcement issues and priorities, and in preparation for the budget discussions that would happen later that month.
So this is the opportunity we've been talking about to set priorities?
Absolutely.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Tuesday, January 8th at 4:00 p.m.
Stacy.
Next speaker is Sharon Judy. Following Sharon will be Carol Limbaga.
Sharon, welcome.
I just want to thank you guys for the consideration and all the putting up with my getting angry about our neighborhood. And just one thing we've all talked about in the neighborhood is more of our involvement with plans.
Are you, are you a part of VINS?
No, I am not.
Okay. Well, but you're still welcome to come to the workshop.
Okay, thank you, I will.
The workshop is for everyone.
Following Sharon will be Carol Limbaga.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carol Limbaga, and I'm a Rancho Cordova resident, and I would like to take you on a visual ride of my neighborhood. Every day, I drive south along Ferment Way, turn right onto Croetta Way, then left onto Mills Park Drive. While driving along, I see folks getting in and out of their parked cars, taking sleeping bags, pillows, and blankets onto the sidewalk and into the three feet of adjoining dirt property. They prepare meals, sometimes cooking on little hibachis. They clean out their grocery carts from the day's collection, putting unwanted items onto the dirt sidewalk or street gutter, leaving them as trash for me to pick up. I see folks waking up, changing clothes, but not necessarily leaving. I know because when I come back, they're still there. Do they live there or in the apartments? I don't know. I also see some industrious folks continuously working on cars in our city street. Various car parts in the street, gutter, and sidewalk, vehicles parked for days, guys talking in no hurry. I see parked cars surrounded by various amounts of trash from the roadside up onto the sidewalk, birds landing to feed on the food trash. And by way of up-to-the-minute news, when I drove here this evening to come, there was in the street, car being worked on, two guys, butts in the air, street side, I had to pull way over because there was an oncoming car coming around the corner where he went by, and then I could get by, and they could care less. Another thing, up to the minute, for the last couple of weeks, that whole area, they put those blue sewer pipes in, what they've been doing, along various places. So guess what? That whole area was clean because the guys were working. And I'm thinking, yay, they finished the two-week work, like last Friday or so. Guess what? It looks horrible already. It's full of trash. People don't care, they just dump it anywhere. Anyway, the city street sweeper has never been able to clean these streets because they're always lined with cars. One Saturday, the VINS folks picked up trash on these three streets and collected 10 bags of trash. After the cleanup, we shared the condition of this chronic area with Neighborhood Services, hoping for some improvements. I observed folks with overloaded grocery carts slowly making their way north up Ferment Way. Where are they going? The park? Now, I want you to know how this makes me feel about my neighborhood. Sad, disappointed, helpless, hopeless. I just want to keep on driving. I am sure you are all aware of the chronic problems this area attracts.
Please wrap up your comments.
Would you please help upgrade my neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And those people are still there working on those cars. I'll bet you when I go home, I'm still going to see them.
Next speaker is Joyce Rosenberg. Joyce will be followed by Pedro.
Good evening, all. Two weeks ago, I told you about my morning walks with Charlie the Wonder Dog, and the things that I saw along the way. Well, Sunday, I went to brunch with my son, which was wonderful, and I was telling him about the meeting two weeks ago, and mentioned code enforcement, and I must have said it too loudly because the man sitting next to me came over and decided to talk to us. He said, what's going on with code enforcement? I said, you need to come to the City Council meeting, and you need to come to VINS. However, in the meantime, he said, I wish you'd bring up the idea of maybe having a monthly meeting with code enforcement like they have with the Neighborhood Watch people. Then we could talk to them, because when I come home from work, they're gone. They're not there on the weekends, they're not there in the evenings, and they leave notes on my door. So he also said that maybe, maybe if they change their hours a little bit and maybe work one Saturday a month, or an evening till six, so that they could be contacted, might be a good idea. I don't know what you all think of that. Maybe they won't like working extra hours, but it might make for better community involvement and communication. Just an idea, but maybe we could all work together. Thank you for listening to me, and two weeks from now, I'll be back with another story about Charlie the Wonder Dog.
Super. Thank you, Joyce. Pedro?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and congratulations to the winners of the latest election. I have lived here in Rancho since 1976. There have been a lot of improvements in that time. Appearance is one of the best. The trees on Folsom are a great improvement. The trees on the corner of Coloma and Georgetown are not. If you are trying to get into Coloma from Georgetown, either left or right, there is a viewing hazard problem. On that area, there are two full-grown trees and a small row of oleanders that impede the traffic view. When I moved here, the traffic on that corner had a speed of about 30 to 40 miles per hour. Now, the speed is 40 to 50 and up. With traffic moving at that speed, you cannot see the cars coming like you used to. To top it off, someone in their infinite wisdom decided, without regards to safety, to plant two more trees to further impede the oncoming traffic. This area is also a busy crossing with four schools nearby. They are Peter J. Shields, St. John Vianney, Mills Middle School, and yes, students from Cordova, both walking and driving. All students start at the same time and end at the same time every school day. Imagine how many students and cars are in that area every school day. To make this area safe, I would like to see the oleanders replaced with the same type of hedge as the rest of the area. The oleander area is only about 30 feet long, while the rest of the hedge is about four times its length. They look out of place there anyway, with a small hedge and a big hedge, and then a little hedge again. That would improve the traffic considerably. The two big trees can stay, but also for safety's sake, they should be removed to further improve the view. Again, in the interest of safety, the two new trees should be moved to some other street where they will not present a viewing hazard to the drivers. They are small, but will grow to add into the viewing hazard. I believe that this would make this area safe and probably save some child's life. Thank you.
Pedro, thank you so much for the comment. We'll pass this on to Public Works. On the other side of that, down on the other side of that little frontage road?
Yes.
There are also oleanders, and they keep them cut down quite low.
Those are nice, and they cut them down, and they look good.
Yeah.
While the ones, that little patch on that one side obstructs the view, and they don't look right besides a little hedge, and then you've got this big hedge for a few feet, and then it drops back down again.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let Public Works know.
The next speaker is Mida Keshat. Following Mida will be Walt Myers.
Good morning. Good morning. It's been a long day. Good evening, Mayor Budge, Councilmembers. I'm Mida Keshat. I reside in Cordova Meadows, and I also want to thank, or congratulate, the winners of this election. And I also want to give thanks to the other people, the runners-up, who had the courage to come out and be part of the process. It's daunting to make yourself so public, and it's hard work, and I want to thank you all. Tonight, I want to talk about garbage cans. I believe, in the past, the City Council adopted a resolution that garbage cans should be behind a fence. And there's two problems with this. In the new part of Rancho Cordova, lots are usually smaller, the houses are more dense, and there's rules about garbage cans when they're built. And going through that housing area, you don't see garbage cans. In the old part of Rancho Cordova, visible garbage cans is pandemic, and some people think they are works of art, that they should be prominently displayed. When we started this resolution, and people were encouraged by the Good Neighbor Guide and everything to put their garbage cans behind fences, a lot of us did. And then some, for reasons I don't understand, began popping up these screens in front of their fence and their gate, where they could put garbage cans behind them rather than opening up the gate and putting them behind. Well, quite frankly, these are amateur screens, and some of them didn't realize that driveways sloped, so they didn't build them according to the slope. They needed some of Linda's engineering.
Don't point at me, point at him.
Yes, and especially Cyrus. So it actually made the properties look worse. And then, there's been quite a bit of talk among neighbors, and it's added to disagreements. I don't know to this right now what the status is on garbage cans. I don't know whether it's so overwhelming that we've just dropped it. I don't know if we haven't gotten the word out that we're serious about it. It's a puzzlement, and I don't have the answer.
Mida, we do understand your puzzlement, and that's part of the purpose of the workshop that Cyrus described, because it's really important that we hear everybody's concerns and set some priorities.
And I can see that. And there's wonderful things going on. You know, the MAC, for one thing, I have enjoyed immensely. I've thought that has brought really good vibes to Rancho Cordova. Also, the orchestra, what a great thing that is. But I think we're sort of being quiet about building a good foundation for the city. And some of these things may seem small in relation to the big things, but yet it sets a tone for the city, and I would like to see that raised a little bit, especially in the old section of Rancho Cordova. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Walt Myers? Walt Myers? Following Walt will be Maureen Nelson.
Madam Mayor, City Council and staff, my name is Walt Myers. I live in Rancho Cordova. At the last council meeting, I was very critical of the responses I had received on emails from the city manager and city clerk. I was wrong, and I am ashamed. They had, in fact, done so diligently, completely, courteously, and timely. They supplied me with the information I requested. And if I had requested help from a great-grandkid, I could have got the dope that I wanted.
We understand.
So much for that. I mean, I would like at this time to publicly acknowledge and apologize to Ms. Leitner, to Mr. Abnar, and thank them for their assistance. And again, I am sorry. I appreciate your commitment to this city. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Walt, that's a remarkable thing you just did. I've got to say, as a city council, I don't think we've ever heard anyone come to the podium and do what you just did. But that's a remarkable demonstration of your personal sense of honor, and we appreciate that.
I will tell you one thing. I learned long ago, you praised in public, criticized in private. And I'm very sorry. I really am.
Last speaker card I have is for Maureen Nelson.
If I may, just quickly, thank you so much for your words, Mr. Meyer. I have tremendous respect for Mr. Meyer. He's been a very important member of this community, and we will always be happy to provide the information he's looking for.
Well, Mayor Budge and the rest of the council, my name is Maureen Nelson, and I've been here since 1986. Tonight, I want to talk about house numbers, or I should say, the lack of the house numbers. One of the things to being a good neighbor is to have a visual house number. I'm still very passionate about the garbage in the streets, and you can't report the garbage or the furniture without a house number. On my way over here, well, first, I went out and talked to the firemen about the lack of the house numbers. But on my way over here, I saw horrible garbage in Angel's area. And you know, I don't really think you understand how upsetting this is. I mean, it's really horrible to come out of your neighborhood and see, I just saw a huge pile of trash and like a stove. Then I went a little bit further, and I saw a big pile of carpet. And you know, they're dealing with cars in the street. I'm dealing with garbage cans. It's just really upsetting when it's a continual thing. So I just want to have code enforcement look into the house numbers because there's many houses that don't have visual house numbers. I went to Home Depot. You can get a house number from $1.48 to $4.78 apiece, the good ones. Harbor Freight, their house numbers, you stick on, and they're not worth anything. So it doesn't cost very much, and it is an ordinance to have a house number. And I want to say to Pedro's comment, I did report those bushes about two years ago because I come up Georgetown many times. And you cannot see, when you come up Georgetown and turn left, the bushes are terrible. My husband has complained numerous times, and that's why I complained. So anyway, those bushes are really a hazard, and I hope that something gets done. Thank you.
So, Maureen, did you report those, even if there are no house numbers, did you report the streets to neighborhood services?
I just saw them tonight. But the rest of the, I mean, honestly, it's really, when you live there, it's fine to live in Sun River and Gold. Everything is nice. And why, you know, it's just so upsetting. I saw the car on the street being fixed. I came around the street, and this guy had something on the tire. And the cars, I mean, they're working right on the street. It's 5:00 at night. So it is a real problem. And if you drive over there, you would see what a problem it is. And we really do feel passionate about it. We want to keep our city nice and have people move here.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have.
Okay. Then we're going to go to council reports, and we'll start with Donald.
Thank you. So I'll start with four of us, and Cyrus and a handful of other folks spent a few days down in LA at the National League of Cities. It's the first time I didn't have to take two or three planes to get to an NLC, so that was very nice. Great time, great weather until Friday, or no, Thursday, when we got to see out of our hotel window the massive fire that was running towards the beach in Malibu, ultimately destroying a lot of homes. And we thought, well, when we fly home, the weather will be a little bit better. And obviously, it hasn't been. But I did attend my Community Economic Development Committee meeting. I guess the one highlight, I will say, is that they adopted a policy around sober living facilities and some of the practices between states of transferring people that end up staying in those facilities or through the system of those facilities for months, if not years, using healthcare dollars. And it's at the detriment of a lot of neighborhoods, it sounds like. But that was very interesting. Our chair was not able to attend. Gina Bivens from Fort Worth, she'd had some eye surgery. And so Kevin, I can't remember his last name right now, from Mesa, Arizona, who's going to be our chair next year, pitched in. But talking about clean air, we have not had an air district meeting since our last meeting, but I did just want to remind people to use the Spare the Air app. I think everyone in this region now has kind of figured out how to navigate that stuff over the last couple of weeks of this absolutely disgusting air that we have. Unfortunately, I'll have to admit that due to this fire, if you guys haven't seen the story, earlier, late last week, Northern California's air was the dirtiest in the world due to this fire. On a happier note, I believe Linda, it was Linda and I attended a ribbon-cutting release party for the new gin coming out of J.J. Pfister Distillery. And they had a great media event there, and Linda represented our city superbly. So, and if you haven't had their gin, it's very tasty. I'm not much of a gin person, but it's pretty good.
Well, David's the one we wanted to go.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah, you were mentioning it. I think it's pretty good, but I don't drink a lot, and so I don't have a lot to compare it to. And then I just want to give a big shout out to UC Davis Aggies. We made the playoffs, I believe, for the, actually, the first time since they entered the 1AA system. And for those of you who weren't following, the Causeway Classic was this weekend. They had to have that game in order to even compete for getting into the playoffs. And they actually have a bye. They're ranked sixth in the nation in the playoff system. So they'll have a bye the first week. But if you didn't follow it, the Causeway Classic was not held at UC Davis. It was not held at Sac State. It was held at the University of Reno because they had to get out of the smoke. So that was a special Causeway Classic for anybody who was able to make it. And then finally, a lot of you have already mentioned or commented to me, my mother passed away on Friday. She had been admitted to the hospital in late January of this year and was battling a lot of different ailments over her life and in the past year. She came home from hospice and passed away at her home in Rancho Cordova. So thank you for everyone's condolences.
I will adjourn tonight's meeting in her memory.
Thank you very much for reminding me.
Catherine Marie.
Terry.
Yes.
Garrett.
First, our hearts are heavy, Donald. I'm sorry for your losses. I want to say thank you to all the veterans. There was a veteran holiday in the smoke, even though we couldn't find them. Thank you to my father, who's a veteran, my uncles that are veterans, my brothers that are veterans, and of course, grandpa, wherever you may be. I went to the NLC, and I learned something very interesting, is that Rancho Cordova is doing some amazing stuff in our city when it comes to homeless veterans and trying to get close to functional zero. So I'm hoping that we can work with Bob, the Veteran Village, and a couple others to really see if Rancho Cordova can be one of the cities that gets to functional zero. For everyone that doesn't know, functional zero means you can't force someone to come into a house, but if you have the housing for the veterans that are living on the streets, that means you're at a functional zero. So I would love to see if Rancho Cordova could house veterans because God knows, we should do whatever we can to help them out because they did everything for us. So that was the most interesting thing. I actually got to stand up, and I found these conferences, if you can really dig in one place and ask questions, they make them totally worthwhile. So where they asked, they said, was anyone have questions? And I jotted out a piece of paper and started writing down everything they were talking about because I didn't understand how a couple cities were able to go from 480 homeless veterans to 26 in four years. So I was like, tell me how you guys did it. And so they're like, they did the big picture. And I was like, well, I see step A and I see step D. And I was like, how do you get between? And what they did is they really got involved with the communities. They brought the realtors in. They brought the private sector in and said, we want you guys to, and then they brought the voucher system they had in and said, we want you to take this, and we want you to help us get functional zero. And basically, they, about 96% of them said yes, and then they found ways that throughout private to kind of make it work. And they even used, you know, older business areas for stuff. So it was really interesting, and I would love for Rancho Cordova to be a functional zero for our homeless vets. I learned about information technology, communication, and what they're doing. We're leaps and bounds around most cities. I did have small cities that referred to people as the little girl in the back, and I was gassed. And I was like, that's, and then they were like, oh, we do a little something over there and a little something over here. And I was like, is that Facebook? Is that YouTube? So our city actually has an amazing communications department. But there's always options, like people really want to start paying online, and so they're very excited about, you know, the steps we're taking to kind of modernize ourselves. I went to the Operation Turkey Gobble, which is amazing. It was one of my first events when I got appointed by the city council. And it was great to see the event still going. I got to give 40 turkeys to Cordova Villa Elementary. They were closed, so the principal actually drove back and called each of the individual families to come back and get a turkey for Thanksgiving. Then we were able to give three turkeys, and at the Mason Veteran Village, we're going to actually put together their first Thanksgiving. And so we're cooking turkeys for them right now, and then we're going to go and serve them. And then we gave two to, we have some families from the campfire that are down here that are now moved into Rancho Cordova, and we're giving those away and serving them. And then some people from another ministry that are using them. I got to have a meeting about the RISE program, and that's about it.
Thank you, Garrett. David?
I also attended the National League of Cities meeting in Los Angeles. As you know, I have a variety of leadership roles there, and so I'm engaged quite a bit in leadership and sort of management activities in the meeting. But I also get to partake of some interesting discussions at the Transportation and Infrastructure Services Committee, where I'm a member. We talked about a number of transportation initiatives likely to impact us going into the future. There was a great deal of interest in that room about what happened with Proposition 6 here in California. People wanted to know, you know, what was the opposition like? How did you overcome opposition in the state? You know, how did that politically sort out? People were interested in sort of learned wisdom from us versus what they may be facing in their state. Because generally, what you're seeing nationwide is a greater and greater focus on local funding for local problems. Our transportation problems weren't created by the legislature in Sacramento. They weren't created by the Congress. People here on the ground making those decisions built those roads, and now we have to maintain them. So really, this is our issue. So many jurisdictions spend much of their time looking for someone else to solve their problem. And what's really becoming clear in infrastructure is, if you've got the infrastructure, you need to pay to maintain it. You should not be looking elsewhere for it. Because as we know, and this is true all over the country, gas tax only covers maybe one-sixth of the cost of maintaining what's already on the ground. So it's not really an adequate revenue to take care of everything, sort of the way the public wishes it would. Not just true here in California, although we're probably at one of the extreme points. That's true all over the country. And so everyone's sort of fighting with that. So that was a very good discussion at TIS. Bob and I were also at a first-tier suburbs meeting, talking about economic development in first-tier suburbs. I'm also happy to see that council sort of on the upswing again at NLC. I'm looking forward to more activities that would benefit us. I attended the Western Municipal Association meeting that was going on there. I don't know if anyone else has even heard of that organization. It's the Western State, so it's Colorado, Idaho, Montana, New Mexico to the west in the United States. They get together as a group and talk about what's going on in their state. Many of them looked to the California Report during that meeting to see what things are coming their way from California. Fascinating thing in that room was we heard people in Colorado cheering that the Democrats had taken over the legislature, and people in Idaho and Montana cheering that the Republicans have even more control of our legislature now. So you could just see this political divide happening in the room. And that was, that's sort of an unfortunate thing. And I actually, you know, and the sentiment was expressed there, we hope that sort of partisanship ends, particularly when we're dealing with local government issues where it has virtually no role. I attended a couple of sessions on bikeway planning and planning for pedestrians as opposed to having primacy of planning for automobiles. A lot of engineers, I think, get really uncomfortable with this notion. Many people, I'm sure Cyrus and your generation of civil engineering, cars and throughput and, you know, lane miles and efficiency for the car was sort of the dominant thought. How do we manage that, maintain that, enhance that? And pedestrians sort of had to fit in around the edges. And now there's this switch happening where we really need to encourage the pedestrians and the bikes, and that means giving them sort of the best locations. And the cars, well, they're going to have to drive around the best locations. And so there's a couple of angles on this sort of fascinating change of thought nationwide about how we design things. And of course, here in California, we've already seen some of that, particularly in how some of our newer neighborhoods are being developed. Veterans Day was unfortunate that it was canceled, but boy, it was a great program that we had for the event. If you looked at it, and I know, Bob, you've had a huge role in this, but it is, and I heard this from many people talking about the fact that it was canceled to me, saying that we have the best Veterans Day event in the region. And I think what tends to garner some regional media time is parades. But in reality, if you added up all the people along the parade route, our event is probably still bigger and certainly better in terms of content than just a veterans' parade. So I'm really proud of that event. And the fact that it was canceled this year led me to have some great feedback about how well it is regarded in the region. So I just thought I would pass that on to you. And I think that is the total of my report. Other than, I'm going to make one other observation. I probably shouldn't do this. So we were in Los Angeles, and many of us, you may have experienced this. The focus down there on the fires in Malibu, and I understand that's close to where we were, so the media attention on Malibu was incredible to me, you know, and Ventura. Meanwhile, we're hearing about Paradise, a town of 26, 27,000 people leveled by a fire. And the story we were getting from the media in LA was focused on which celebrity had to evacuate which of their mansions. And it was frankly sickening to me.
Luckily, national news didn't bite on that.
They didn't.
No, they didn't.
But yes, the local stations that are watching our hotel. Even to the extent of people on the street, you know, so there was someone, I was waiting in front of the hotel for a bus, and a nice lady standing next to me about my age. And she said, boy, these fires are just terrible, aren't they? And I said, they really are. And she said, well, Justin Bieber had to, you know, he had to evacuate his mansion. And I sort of looked at her, and I said, you know, in Northern California, an entire town was leveled. 26,000 people lost their homes, lost their place to live. Their town's gone. And she said, well, but this is Justin Bieber. And I just thought, people in the Midwest who are my relatives don't understand the difference between Northern and Southern California, but that kind of summarized it right there, at least in my mind. I am so happy to be from this end of the state, and I'm really proud. I had a conversation with Cyrus, actually, I guess a text conversation with Cyrus about what could we as a city do to support our neighbor to the north, Paradise. And the great, you guys may not be aware this happens, but SECOG is a regional organization, and the managers, city managers and county managers, county executives who have membership in SECOG meet as a parallel group to the SECOG Board once a month. And I'm vice chair of SECOG, so Cyrus is now vice chair of that organization, although you may have been acting as chair of the organization this year, de facto. Certainly, next year, he'll be chair while I'm chair. So I called Cyrus, and I said, we as a region, even though Paradise is not part of our SECOG jurisdiction, need to figure out what to do because we sort of wrap around, you know, Butte County. And the managers had an immediate response, and I think are still active in sort of seeking what sort of help we can render Butte County and Paradise specifically. Cyrus, you might want to comment on that when this gets around to you. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bob?
The, we learned about the first tier, and I talked to some of the gentlemen there about veterans there in LA. We were in the, in... about veterans there in LA. We were in the, in NLC. How you can get some people to get off the street. That's one of the biggest problems I think we have. We have a couple of people, probably a lot more, but I can think of two, who have been homeless in Rancho Cordova for a couple of decades. And they just won't go in no matter how much you, what you give them. And some of the veterans are like that also. One of the things that I'm looking forward to with the Veterans Village, when they have that done, is the number of veterans will be able to learn what they are eligible for. So many of them that are on the street who live there along the river. It's just so sad when you try to offer something to someone and they have gone so far down the tube of health and everything else, that it's hard to convince them that they can do better. So we're still working on that. May, the Phase Three with the 50 apartments should be done. And in, if you were at the luncheon, then you'll learn quite a bit about the Veterans Village. At the Mather Community Campus, it's been going on since 1994. We have about 300, more or less, people who were former homeless. And between 20 and 25% of them are veterans, former homeless veterans. There's a lot going on here in Rancho Cordova to help our veterans. And so many of them that are there in the first 50 apartments in Phase One of the Veterans Village, they are so pleased and so happy to be there. They talk to each other. They're looking forward to the next 50. They're looking forward to the 50 beds that'll be in the transitional part of Phase Two in that building. There's just so much going on with that. And I'm so pleased that we got through that. I mean, it took a long time, about six and a half years, to have the groundbreaking done in October of 2014. It took a while to get there, but we did. And we got so much help from Don LaToli, from the city, from veterans organizations. We went back to Washington DC and talked to the director of the Homeless Veterans Department. It's just, there's a lot going on, but there is still problems with the computers that aren't talking to each other. So veterans have problems with that still. But we're working on it. And it's something that's going to be really, really, really good. Veterans Day was a well-prepared. It was set up, if you could see some of the pictures that were there, and it showed from 1918 to 2018. And they were just beautiful pictures and displays and everything. I was asked the day before Veterans Day if we're going to cancel or not. And well, the national weather said the winds were supposed to pick up by four o'clock in the morning on Veterans Day, and it should clear a lot of the smoke. Well, it didn't. And we got a call from the band, they canceled. If you play an instrument, especially brass, then you're inhaling an awful lot of air. And they weren't a bit to do, about to do that when they had the band trying to play in that kind of smoke and everything. So this coming Memorial Day, I'm hoping, praying that we have some good air, and we can have everything set up for Memorial Day. It's going to be a good time to have all those 500 to 700 members of the audience. I think you're right, David, about more people there than we have, people have on parade. It's just, it's just a wonderful organization that has been, all the volunteers, like the airshow, it's the volunteers that do that. With the Veterans Day Memorial Day, it's the volunteers that do that. We have so many people here at City Hall, people that are just veterans from the BFW and the American Legion, and family members whose veterans, members of their family have passed away, but they want to help. So it's just great to have that, another thing that you can be very proud of here in Rancho Cordova. One little thing about the Mather. In 1917, the Department of War found and decided on 32 locations to build a place for planes. Mather was one of them. In January of 1918, is when they began putting in the buildings and putting in the runway and all that sort of thing. So it's been so many things you can learn just by looking at what was there. And it's astounding to me that we have the people here that we still have. I know our master ceremonies, Bob Burns, he was in World War II and Korea and Vietnam. And it's, he's speaking tomorrow to the Women Veterans Lunch, I think. So it's so many things that people do to help each other and to educate each other. So there's just so much that will be done. I know we were, one more thing, we were there in LA, and one thing we went to was the Griffith Park and the Observatory. They have a wonderful display and a setup there and program there at the Observatory. While we were there at the Observatory, you could look off in the distance inside of one hill and then another one over on the right, two big fires going. It is so sad to see there's so much being burned. I mean, when you have Paradise, one of the reporters that was first there on the second day said, this is Paradise, but right now it looks more like hell. It's just nothing but fire and everything going up. And it's, so, you know, we have, we are helping every, as much as we can here. I know Cyrus has some details on the people that have been living here in Rancho Cordova. They came from Paradise. They need a place to live. Right now, Wednesday morning is the rain supposed to start. So you're going to have a couple of inches of rain when this is done. I don't know what's going to happen up there, other than it's going to be more and more problems because of the ashes and everything with the rain coming down. And so what's going to happen to Paradise now? It'll be washed down the hills as well as being burned to begin with. So pretty sad. But thank you.
Thank you, Bob. So yes, we did participate in a turkey giveaway that Golden State Water provided the turkeys. And we gave them to a variety of organizations, including the Cordova Foot Locker, Food Locker, sorry, wrong expression. And Donald and Diane, Diane Rogers and I attended the release party at J.G. Pfister. And if Donald says that the gin was okie dokie, then I will trust that gin not being my thing. We just needed David, our connoisseur. It was my privilege to teach the inaugural, the 2019, 18, 19 inaugural class at Leadership, the Arts, Culture and History of Rancho Cordova, as I do every year. And we had our international potluck and where everybody brings food that is typical of their family, and then gets to describe why they brought what they brought and how it relates to their family. I was invited to the inaugural ceremony for the new postmaster here in Rancho Cordova. It's been probably three or four years since we've had a new postmaster. And this gentleman certainly seems to be happy to be here. And Cyrus and I have a meeting with him on Wednesday morning. And last Monday evening, we had the Regional Transit Meeting. And I have to say that Regional Transit's plan to restructure the bus routes all over Sacramento County is not going to do anything at all for Rancho Cordova. And so we've started a dialogue with Regional Transit. We have only like four bus routes as it is, and they're planning on cutting them down to two. And that's not actually going to work for us at all. Veterans Day, I was happy to join the, the group from Community Council who went out to Mather and made sure that everybody had gotten the word that Veterans Day was canceled. And we, we truly owe kudos to Community Council and to our Communications Department, who did a really good job of notifying people on social media, through the radio and TV stations, through the V. We really only had about two dozen people who actually showed up. And it may be that some of them simply did not attend because of the, because of the smoke in the air, which was quite visible that day. So it was our pleasure to do a sort of a small-scale brick dedication at Community Council on Friday afternoon at lunch. Bob and I participated. And every year at Memorial Day and at Veterans Day, for those of you who don't know, there are bricks that have been purchased by veterans or their families or people in the community. And all of those bricks are dedicated. And for me personally, that's just really one of the extremely special moments in either the Veterans Day or the Memorial Day Ceremony. So we did that on Friday at lunch because the topic was the Mather Veterans Village, so it seemed logical to do that. And partnered with Community Council and the VA Hospital to do that. And the one thing that we really didn't get to do was to acknowledge the fact that it was the 100th anniversary of the ending of World War I, and which is how Veterans Day got started to begin with. So we have a short proclamation here. We were asked to do, we were asked to join people all over the world in ringing bells at the 11th hour of the 11th day, just to commemorate the ending of the war. So the proclamation, and I think Stacy, we're going to send this to the organization?
We already did, and it's on their website.
Okay, super. So the proclamation reads, "Given in honor of the bells of peace, a World War I remembrance, November 11, 2018, whereas a century ago, 4.7 million American families sent their sons and daughters off to World War I, and whereas the resources of our entire nation were, excuse me, were brought to bear on the war effort, and whereas 116,516 Americans gave their lives in the war, and more than 200,000 were wounded, and whereas the tolling of bells is a traditional expression of honor and remembrance, and whereas in November 2018, the world will commemorate the 100th anniversary of the armistice that ended the fighting in World War I at 11:00 AM, November 11, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby acknowledge that the United States' World War I Centennial Commission does hereby call upon all Americans across the nation to toll bells in remembrance of those who served in World War I at 11:00 AM. In witness thereof, I have signed this. And so we didn't get to do it at Community Council because it wasn't 11 o'clock. It was already noon, which was unfortunate. But we didn't have a place to read the proclamation, so I thought I would do that. And the only thing I can offer is that I have this nice cowbell app on my phone for when we go to the Kings, if we all want to ring bells. But it's not 11 o'clock. Cyrus, your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Related to the fires, just to think about this, this incredible tragedy, it's just even hard to imagine. So as has been mentioned before, we have done a few things to assist the victims of the fire. We started by, we thought it was the right thing to provide a check from the city for $10,000, which we did. Initially, we had intended to give the funds to Red Cross, but in doing some additional research, we found out another organization that was recommended by the City Managers Group, including the ones in Paradise. It's a organization called the North Valley Community Foundation. So the $10,000 check was sent to them to be given directly to the victims of the fire. We also had a senior center in Paradise that was evacuated. Unfortunately, all residents were safely evacuated to Rancho Cordova. And they are staying at our Marriott. Based on the numbers that we have, we have about 77 senior residents, plus some other family members and some other residents from Paradise. So we possibly have over 100 residents from Paradise Community that are living in our Marriott on Sunrise. So we did reach out to them, and I'm grateful to our staff. Megan Heber was able to make contact with the Marriott Hotel Manager and offered our assistance any way we could. Our Civic Orchestra is, has offered to go and play for them, and we will find an opportunity to do so. We have offered food baskets. We have also put together a, some, a gift basket that we will, we plan on taking to them for Thanksgiving. Another thing that we, some of these senior citizens had to be relocated from one of the hotels for an event that was taking place this weekend. And our Public Works Team provided some safety lights, and we facilitated them getting some golf carts, so they were able to be safely move, move, move around the community. So more to come. I'm also on the list and potentially would be called to personally go out there and to assist with some of the, assess the damage assessment and identify some ways that we, as a community, could come together. As Councilmember Sander mentioned, I am involved in some of the organizations with City Managers Group, and we are in close contact in identifying ways that different communities can step in to help the victims of the fire. It's, and just to think about what they're going through, it's really heartbreaking at this point. Couple other things I just wanted to point out, that we were quite honored, the city, the Volpe Transportation Center that is in Boston, have been helping the City of Federal Way and the State of Washington for a light rail extension to their community. And they looked around for some, the Volpe Center is, is an institution that provides, it's a thought leader. They provide facilitation to difficult problems and different issues. They looked throughout the entire nation, identified about 150 communities that could possibly provide some help and input in the process with City of Federal Way. And they ultimately landed on City of Rancho Cordova and City of Lone Tree, Colorado. And we were invited to go and spend a day and a half with them. And I was quite honored to be representing the city in that thought exchange, and was well received. And as these kind of trips go, we also have a lot to learn from them. I found out that they have just recently completed a civic center that may have some of the features and the elements that we're looking for and may be interested, and we might be able to consider taking a visit and looking at that. Lastly, I wanted to also mention that the city was recently honored with an innovation showcase for our Mather Veterans Village Project by transforming local governments. And this, they have invited us to present at their conference in Reno and Nevada that is going to be the, the spring of 2019. So more to come on that, but this is also another recognition, honor, well-deserved for the city for the amazing work that we've done for the Mather Veterans Village. That's all I have.
Thank you, Cyrus. That sounds terrific. So we'll move into our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are deemed routine in nature and can be approved in one motion unless somebody wishes to pull one, two, four discussion. So do we have any speaker cards signed up for any of these?
We do not.
Okay. So does anybody on the council have any questions about items 1.9.1 through 9.6?
Seeing none, I'll move the calendar.
Thank you very much.
I'm second that.
Wonderful. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, motion carries. We have no consent public hearing items, but we do have one public hearing item, the Rivergate Quick Quack Car Wash, conditional use permit and minor design review permit. And we will introduce city staff.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and councilmembers. My name is June Cowell, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. My name is June Cowell, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. And so the project request is for a minor design review and conditional use permit is for a 3,805 square foot drive-through car wash building with parking, vacuums, lighting, and landscaping. And so to get you to the site, it's the northwest corner of Sunrise Boulevard and Zimphendale Drive at 2346 Zimphendale Drive, and that's within the Rivergate Shopping Center. It's also known as parcel 10, and that actually continues across the drive aisle, but we only have the outlined area where the project location is at, so the existing parking will And here's a closer look at the existing parking lot. Looking at the proposed site plan, it's a two-lane entrance, and it's got a stacking distance of over 350 feet within it with an option to exit. So you can see that it exits out to the drive aisle behind the site. And that's just in case anybody's car is too big to fit through there, or they change their mind. There is, moving through the drive-through Quick Quack, you stay in the, in your car, and it moves you through the building. And there is a low-stacked stone wall that goes around the exit aisle from the car wash, so there will be limited visibility from Zimphendale Drive into the car wash exit. There are 15 parking spaces with covered vacuum stations, and then there's three onsite parking spaces and bike racks. Rivergate Stone, a Rivergate Shopping Center has reciprocal parking and access agreement. Also, the entrance and exit from the car wash is located approximately 120 feet from the existing driveway off of Zimphendale Drive. And now looking at the proposed elevations, it's consistent design, material, and color with the Rivergate Shopping Center. And I have the material board. So the accent stacked stone, concrete masonry block and stucco, and they have the horizontal metal canopies on the west side of the building. And then also metal canopies over the parking spaces with a single-point vacuum. So the vacuum will be all housed in one area instead of the individual containers. And then here's a picture, the canopies over the parking vacuum area.
Go back really quick about the vacuum. I don't understand what you're saying. You're saying it's one big vacuum with a bunch of hoses to different spaces?
It reaches, it's called a single-point vacuum. And so I know the City of Folsom just built one, and they have one where you have the hoses.
I just know what the one looks like on Sunrise, okay.
Yeah. The one on Sunrise, I think, still has the canisters.
Yes.
So here's a picture of the material and colors, and here is a picture of the material and colors that are going to be on this building. For the landscape plan, the trees line the project area along the existing building, that's to the north, so to add some greenery up there, and along the drive aisle on the west side of the car wash. And there is an existing sycamore tree along Zimphendale Drive, that's a 29-inch tree that's proposed to be retained. So the car wash is permitted with the approval of conditional use permit. The design includes the site layout, location, and business operation. It's consistent with the car wash development standards within the zoning code. And the building design material and color are consistent with the existing shopping center and the city design guidelines. And then the Rivergate Shopping Center consists of 10 parcels, which all have reciprocal parking access agreement, and there are several driveway entrances, exits to and from the So in 2015, nearly 300 linear feet of frontage improvements were completed on Zimphendale Drive to extend that merging lane. And so that was designed to have less likely extending the queuing into Sunrise and Zimphendale intersection. So environmental, it is exempt under section 15303. And staff recommends the City Council find the project categorically exempt from the CEQA review and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and minor design review for the Rivergate Quick Quack Car Wash, subject to findings, plans, project plans, and conditions of approval. And with that, you have any questions? And the applicant is here.
So are there questions for staff?
I just have one. I'm probably okay with this project, but what is the distance of stacking that you have for cars? Because I know that was a significant conversation that we had when it was Chick-fil-A, and you're adding that much more into, right as that road narrows? So what is Public Works' opinion of the stacking of cars into that as, that is really the main entrance into there, and it's like the smallest part of anywhere to get into that shopping center? But most people that are going to be coming to that place are going to make that left off of Sunrise, off of north, going north on Sunrise, and hang a left into there to go to Chick-fil-A and end this.
Yeah, good evening, members of the council. I'm Steve Herriman, Department of Public Works. I'm sorry, I don't have that number readily available in terms of the stacking.
Did we do some sort of analysis between, I'm wondering, not only the stacking into this business, but the impact as far as, like, right after this is when it goes down to one lane each way? Am I correct?
Correct.
It's just past this?
Right.
Stacking room for a fast-food restaurant is 180 feet.
And we had significantly more than that for Chick-fil-A, right? Because, and they wanted the...
No, I thought it was shorter.
No, I thought they went way over their normal standard, and that was a complaint that we actually had, was they wanted more than what our standard was, and they wanted the dual ordering stations.
Dual order thing, yeah, like McDonald's.
I'm just wondering, was there any analysis done that can be shared about the entrance into here and the fact that you're having them blow off? I know one thing that we had talked about was conditioning, not allowing the pass-through at the Chevron, so being able to pull into the Chevron, then pull into here and try to get in line. And I don't know, that may even impact this more, because you're taking away another option of getting into this shopping center, because now everyone has to funnel through this one opening that's coming from the south. So was there any analysis done of that impact?
So traffic projections were done for the project, and they did not meet the threshold to trigger a full-blown traffic study.
Okay.
We have looked at the site very carefully, and we've looked at the proposed circulation, and we feel that I think it's about as good as we can possibly get for that location. As we all know, it's a congested area, especially during rush hour, so there is going to be some impact, but according to the traffic projections, it was not deemed to be a significant traffic impact.
So, and am I reading this right? So the after improvement, so are we widening Zimphendale right there?
No.
Is that what I'm understanding? So what is extend merge lane to allow more time for merging and entering the shopping center?
That's what was done in 2015.
Oh, okay, this was the current, okay.
So if you look at the bottom photograph there, you can see...
Okay, so we're not gonna do this, is what we did.
Right, that merge lane that kind of goes around the curb, and so...
Okay. Yeah, that, to me, that's really, my only concern is that figuring out if this is going to cause backing up into Sunrise, especially during peak hours, but...
Because Chick-fil-A does already, and at lunchtime. David's been stuck in it.
Yeah, I would say, though, that's still not the, that's not the peak time on Sunrise that I'm that, that I'm the most concerned about.
No, but that's the point. It can do it, it can, the traffic at Chick-fil-A can cause a backup on Sunrise at lunchtime.
A really awkwardly engineered or non-engineered center.
Non-engineered.
Because it was done piecemeal instead of with a master plan.
Absolutely.
So it has this awkwardness where we're always battling when we come to these decisions.
On the flip side, I mean, we all can acknowledge that this shopping center is a massive improvement from what it was four years ago. And so, you know...
It just would have been nice if the buildings had been designed to facilitate traffic moving around.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we've actually...
But again, they're dealing with a shell and a design that's from, what, the '60s?
Well, the perimeter, but the buildings that were built, that have been built in there were at somebody's discretion. So we've actually denied previous requests for this particular location because of the traffic. Additional questions?
Can I ask a question to economic development?
Let's do questions for planning first.
Pedestrians currently can get to that area behind the center just by walking down the side of the building. With this modification in place, I'm guessing they'd have to go down, or cyclists would have to go down sort of the driveway...
Can we have a site plan, please?
Of the car wash in order to get to the rear area?
Why would they go, why would pedestrians want to walk to the rear of the building?
There's actually a surprising amount of traffic behind these buildings. I think people are trying to get to Coloma without going through the center itself because of the number of pedestrians...
Because they're taking their life in their hands.
Crossing, yeah. And so I'm always surprised, but there are cars and bikes that will go through this back So if this had been built out as perhaps was originally designed, there would be no opportunity for someone to walk through. But this particular project will give someone the ability to walk through. I'm just wondering if there's any...
Marching through the landscaping.
Yeah, through the landscaping or just down that driveway. I don't know that there's any other...
I'm sorry, what are you trying to prevent? You're saying you're trying to cut off access to behind the buildings?
I'd actually like to preserve it, because for some reason, people walk and bike behind these buildings to get to Coloma.
Mm-hmm.
So it's sort of a left...
When I lived there, I used to do that.
Well, there we go. You might be able to explain about it.
And I didn't walk or bike.
You drove it.
Uh-huh.
So driving, you could still, you could drive through, there are no speed bumps back there.
There, there...
I think we just heard one reason why people use it.
Right.
Uh-huh. There are actually two back there.
There are speed bumps back there. I don't take that path myself, so I don't, I don't know. But I'm just wondering if there's any accommodations for pedestrians that could be, could be found here.
In the landscaping.
Or what they will do is they'll use the driveline.
Yeah.
You know, people will take the shortest route. They're not going to walk around the perimeter of this facility. They're going to walk either through the landscaping or down that lane.
Sure. Bob, did you have any questions?
I'm just curious about the pedestrians also, but I think some of the times we have the pedestrians don't really seem to care whether there's any cars there or not. You just go right in front of them, and I think this, putting that aside, I think this is a good location for the Quick Quack. And I know it's, there was a discussion in the past about, and then empty space that is next to Walgreens, but that didn't work. But I think this is a much better place. And as was said, four years ago, this parking lot and everything there was almost waiting for something to happen, and it has happened with everything from the shopping there with all the heavens, with all the restaurants we have there, and smart and final, and just goes on. And I think this would be a good place for this Quick Quack to be. It looks to me like it was well-designed for this area, and I think with the cover on it, like you were talking about, I think that would make it even better. So right now, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Okay. So I have a question. These parking spaces, those people are going to be backing out into the main drive aisle. So what's this thing?
That's the dumpster enclosure.
So how are the people, number one, backing out into this main drive aisle is probably not the best plan. But number two, how are they going to see what's coming at them from this direction if the dumpster is right there?
We did bring that up, looking at the design and sitting down with Public Works, looking at the circulation and the drive aisle. And I think with the constraints, and they do have all the parking across the drive aisle as well, I think they were just, you know, looking at employee parking, because it is two parking spaces and then the handicap parking. So those won't have any vacuums to it.
Well, and those spaces, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about, assuming this is north-south, you're going to be looking out to your right behind your car, so it's not really the dumpster that you got, that's impeding your view that way.
Well, no, I agree. From the, from your right side, part of it is smart and final.
Right.
Or...
No, it's the pet club.
The, yeah.
But if you're backing out and going south, you're backing out into traffic, but you're going to see them.
Yeah.
And then you're going, then you're going south. Now, if somebody wanted to be as bold as to back out and try to go north now, now they got a problem.
They got a problem.
With their view.
So what's this? Is this proposed something about oil?
I'll let the applicant explain that building.
Okay. Okay. So...
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Afraian Corona. I'm with Quick Quack Car Wash. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm happy to answer questions specifically to that building there. That is where the order-taking happens. So that is a building that has an office. That's where our team members will greet the customers, take their order, and then direct them onto the car wash.
So you're going to do it out of a building instead of just a little kiosk the way they do on Sunrise?
Yes. This is actually a little bit closer to our current design. It gives the manager a place to have inside the building. It's also a storage for our IT equipment and then our ordering spot.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you very much.
I did want to address the vacuum question as well. It's a central vacuum system, so there's one vacuum producer. Everything is, yeah, and it's all piped to each of the vacuum locations. So it is very different than what you have at Sunrise.
So basically, what you'd have then is just one hose...
Correct.
Coming out of the overhead structure.
There's two for each stall, one on either side.
It's like having, it's like those old versions of the whole-house vacuum that you plug into the wall. I mean, in theory, right? You have one unit that you have to clean out, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay.
And regarding the employee stalls, those are the employee stalls that are backing out next to the trash enclosure. With the trash enclosure there rather than the other side, we were actually get those parking stalls a little bit further away from that drive aisle. Not by much, but it did help give them a little bit of room to back out.
If it was on the other side, backing out and trying to go south would be a nightmare.
Yeah, it would probably be impossible.
Right.
I think you'll have to have something in your trash collection contract that says collect before 5:00 a.m. or something like that.
Okay.
To avoid, because obviously, you know, like, noon would be a really bad time...
Right, we wouldn't do that. We wouldn't do something like that. I mean, we, you know, our customers wouldn't like that either.
For sure. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
There was a question for economic development? Amanda?
Amanda, what do you think of this project? And I love what you're doing with this area of Rancho.
What do I think in terms of...
Placing a car wash in this area? What do you think about how it's going to survive? What do you feel about this project?
So without having done any leakage analysis on this, what I can say is that what we were seeing in retail is a very different model than what we've seen in the past. Obviously, with online retail, people are looking for more experiential and things to go to. So in every one of our retail centers, we expect to see things that are gyms, are really popular restaurants, and places people go for convenience. And that includes car washes, as well as dental offices, nail salons, anything along those lines. So being that there aren't any other car washes really close by to this, I think it is a pretty solid location for this type of use there.
Okay, are there any other questions? Did anybody else come to speak to this item?
No.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, motion carries. Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing us this project. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Please.
I, I've been doing this type of work for well over 20 years, and I have to tell you that this was the most efficiently ran project. We were submitted and approved within maybe five months, and it was very efficient. So, I just wanted to say that for staff and thank for their help.
Okay, so our last item. From economic development. Uh, modifications to our existing economic development programs.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. Um, tonight, we're going to be discussing three of our current economic development programs. The commercial sign and facade program, which was enacted in 2017, our business incentive program, which was enacted in 2016, and our revolving loan program, which started in 2015. Our commercial sign and facade program, um, it was really designed to incentivize renovation of all of our commercial business sign and facades that are either in poor condition or non-compliance. We have completed four projects to date, and what we're discussing here this evening is that while this program started in 2017, we've learned some lessons as this has gone through in our four projects. And so, before you is some amendments to those guidelines to shore up some language that we've seen that's been confusing for some of our applicants, specifically really regarding our prevailing wage. So, explaining really what prevailing wage is, so they have a better understanding of it. Also, through our work with our city attorney's office, as well as our consultant who does our underwriting, Chuck Wolf, and he is in the audience this evening for questions, is looking to reduce currently the way the program is structured is a two-thirds, one-third grant program, and it goes up to $70,000. One of the things we've realized with, um, the Department DIR is that if it's below $25,000, it makes the application process much easier for our commercial folks who aren't really akin to working with prevailing wage on a regular basis. And then the other thing we've really learned is that they, we need to understand further on how, when they apply for the grant and get reimbursement, the things that we're looking for. So, canceled checks, paid invoices, and we really clearly denoted those facts within, um, the commercial sign and facade program and our new revised guidelines. And so, before you this evening is the proposed amendments to those programs, and those are the highlights that are covered, and they're all attached in your packet. The second program that we have is our business incentive program. This one has been enacting since 2016. And really, this one was designed to both help attract projects into the city's target markets, but also look at those people who are looking to expand within the city of Rancho Cordova. We've done seven projects to date, and that ranges everything from helping out a new retail center on the corner of Sunrise and Douglas, as well as we had a manufacturing business that was locating out of state into Rancho Cordova. Um, this is also one where we were really looking at those seven projects and any lessons we could learn into the amendments proposed this evening before you. Um, we looked at, um, the understanding from council that you really wanted to see more projects along Folsom Boulevard. So, we weighted the program so that we really look at those projects where they've been vacated for two years along Folsom Boulevard, in the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. There were some codes, um, that we were putting under our targeted industry sectors that we realized should probably be streamlined. Um, we removed, um, projects such as dance companies, historical sites, zoos and botanical gardens, nature parks, HMO medical centers, and diagnostic imaging centers, and grocery stores. Um, while we do have a grocery store that went in, we felt like going forward and looking at really what our target markets need to be, these are categories that should have been removed from those programs. We also looked at programs when they applied for us, what kind of awards was, were we looking to give out. And while there is the California law that requires anything over $100,000 be publicly noticed, that is still in effect, and we definitely honor that. But we're really looking to more gear this towards smaller amounts and really spread the dollar amounts out there. That said, um, as we've heard from council in the past, case by case is really how you'd like to, um, have all these projects come through to you. So, we do have some language in the program that allows for case by case, if a bigger project comes in, that we are able to still utilize the current program and bring those projects before you for approval and consideration. And that also went with, when we really looked at how retail projects come in, um, so we added some additional qualification language around those, looking specifically at having leakage analysis done, and if sales tax is coming through, how soon that those monies would basically the city would get a reimbursement on the investment. And then, of course, when it comes to prevailing wage, that is always a factor, and we really strengthen the language in the program to help our applicants understand what prevailing wage is and how they'd be able to function through that. And then finally, our third program is our revolving loan fund program. This is our longest-running program to date. Um, it was enacted in 2015. However, while we've marketed the program out there, we've had two broad projects come in since then. And really, due to the lack of interest, available funding through SBDC, SBA, and of course, the RISE program, we really felt like this is a program that we would look to rescind and remove from our regular list of programs, knowing that with RISE and other programs, we actually have the ability to still get loan funds out there. So.
So, you would simply divert those funds. Would you take that pot of money and apply it to the other two programs or, or come up with a different program to use it for?
So, how it's structured right now, under our ask of Community Enhancement Fund this year, the revolving loan fund and the business incentive program are linked. So, that's one pot of money that would go for both of those programs.
Okay.
So, what we're proposing is just removing the revolving loan fund program. This year, the dollar amounts would stay there because we'd still be able to utilize those for the business incentive program.
Super.
And the sign and facade is a separate pot of funds under the Community Enhancement Fund.
Right.
So, before you this evening, we are asking for your consideration that you adopt, consider and adopt three amendments. The amendment to the sign and facade program, the amendment to the business incentive program, and then approve the rescinding of the revolving loan fund program.
Right.
And I'll throw it open for any questions, again, for both staff as well as the applicant, or, excuse me, the applicant. Our underwriter is in the audience this evening and will be able to answer some of the questions.
Super. Um, I have to comment that, um, all of the issues that you've run into are exactly the same issues that we ran into in the late 90s at the chamber when we were doing the facade program and the sign replacement programs. And it, those are things that are just inherently difficult to work with and, and difficult to explain. And in our case, it really didn't help that every time we turned around, either HUD or SHRA, we're changing the nature of the program. So, um, the chamber would get, it explained one way to somebody, and then they would apply. And by the time they got through the application process, it would have changed. So, this is much better. Questions for staff?
Uh, not so much a question as I, I, I agree with everything you're doing. I'd, I'd like to actually do a little bit more research. Um, we don't really know the findings of the RISE program yet, and we might need that, uh, third program as a way to loan to our businesses. So, I, I wouldn't want to scrap it quite yet. Uh, maybe we can talk a little bit more with economic development about how the RISE is, you know, what we're doing with that.
But you want to describe the RISE program and, and what about it is actually not working?
So, we haven't heard anything that's not working on it, but we also haven't heard any findings for how it has been utilized. I understand that funds have been loaned out, but I haven't gotten any word whether they were to our businesses or just RISE in general as it's being used.
Well, a couple of things on that. First off, it, the RISE program has an annual reporting requirement, so we haven't gone a full year to even get a report. But my understanding and is regardless of where the deposits came from, a bank can't say that like there's a special Rancho Cordova loan if you're a business in Rancho Cordova. That's, it's risk-based pricing. You, um, they would run into a, a ton of regulatory issues with saying there's a special loan if you have a, a business in Rancho Cordova. So, that's not really the purpose of it. The point of it is probably a lot of loans that they were going to do in the course, the normal course of their business, they're going to report back how much of it went into Rancho Cordova. So, there is no special product out there. Um, I, I think I was advocating when we were considering it was to add a component of SBA reporting or something like that and show what, what kind of increases they've had year over year in loans to small businesses. The, the two banks that we mainly parked that money with are going to be doing real estate loans. It's not going to be the kinds of loans and stuff that, that are going to affect a lot of the economic development drivers. It's probably going to be a lot of residential development, uh, capital. Um, so, I, I, it's probably not a decent place to even have this discussion in economic development around what RISE was doing.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we met early with the two banks and put together a marketing plan, and each bank had a different idea of how this money would be spent. But Council Mo Terry is, of course, right on that this money isn't a special account for Rancho Cordova companies. Um, it's just money that the city has placed into the banks. Um, but I think that, um, one thing we talked and we shared with you early in the years, we don't want to be in the banking business. Um, it's, it's very risky. Um, our consultant can tell you the amount of hours we spent with them on underwriting. Most people that come to us for loans, when they come to us, we're the last cause. And even then, taxes, payroll issues come up, and it's just not a good loan. So, you know, we're asking to be taken out of the, the loan business, but to work closely with the banks that we have and other banks in the community to, to work on small business loaning. Um, they are real estate banks, but they still do business loans. There's a couple that I'm working with them closely, just as to introduce them, to get the conversation started. So, we, we think RISE has value, but it's not the answers I think that Councilmember Gatewood's looking for. But it's time for us to get out of the banking business.
Yeah. Traditionally, programs like this, when I worked for a, a, a bank before, they made large commitments around African-American lending to small businesses, Latino-owned small businesses, women-owned businesses. But the way that they did it was kind of like driving a car by, by only using your, your rearview mirrors, right? So, they would go during their course of business and say, "This is important to employees that, that you find more businesses like this." But there isn't like, because you're a women-owned business, you get a half a point off and we'll, and we'll take a lower credit score. It's, everyone's still got to do the exact same thing. They're just reporting what they're doing in our community. So.
Yeah.
So, it's not, it's not a product like what I think.
Right.
Some of us might have assumed. And it can't be. It's not legal for them to do that.
We do remember the discussion earlier in, earlier this year, when you talked about the, the pitfalls. David, did you have a question?
So, you know, I think our goal is, is probably the same, sitting in this chamber, trying to figure out how do we support local businesses, particularly small businesses, and assist them in growing to whatever their next level is. Maybe it's gone from one employee to two, maybe it's gone from 10 to 20, maybe it's gone from 20 to 100.
Or buying new equipment or whatever.
Whatever, whatever that step is, we want to be sure they can do it here. They don't have to locate somewhere else. We just want to, we want to, you know, we're a very business-friendly community. We want to, we want to double down on that. We have a unique economic role in the region. Because the number of jobs are already here, we sort of have an obligation to the region to uphold that, you know, here, and do, do whatever we can to grow the success of businesses that are already here, in addition to attract others. So, you know, if, if this program is not it, and RISE can't quite get us there, and SBA loans tend to be enormously bureaucratic and time-consuming, hard to get, where's the sweet spot? You know, where, where is, where is our resource best spent to achieve the goals I just sort of outlined?
So, I think there are many moving pieces. One is our grant program. The grant program's already shown that it's successful in helping businesses. We did one that was a, um, a high-tech kind of a, what was the testing, testing facility? And for them to grow, they needed to move their equipment. And it was a, a very quick, fast move. So, capital was hard to get. We provided a grant to move, help them move that business so that their employees could go back to work, and they added 10, 15 more employees. So, that's just one example. Um, as far as capital, capital is, is, is an area that they have to be able to be credit-worthy. They have to be able to, you know, pay this back in a, in a, in a agreed amount of time. And, and I feel that if working with SBA, working with our, our partners, our banks, that we can fulfill most of that. Um, and then we, I think we should keep the language open for special cases. And those are the ones that, you know, obviously be ran through the city manager's office. And if, if it's, if it's deemed worthy, or it creates jobs, or it brings a business here that we don't have or we want to have, then it's a special case.
Yeah, I think that, that's right on target, because there are going to be some businesses that will be of special value to us, for whatever reason. Something that we seek, something that's a key to something else, something that's occurring in a location that we put enormous amount of value on. Yeah, there are going to be those special cases.
And especially like working with our partners like Greater SAC Economic Council. I don't think it's wise to put a dollar amount, "Here's what we'll contribute." I think it's wiser to say, "Case-by-case basis, let's look at the investment and then return on the end dollar." Um, we're very fortunate as a city, uh, the 20-something years I've been working in Rancho, I don't think we've ever given funds. And we've been able to attract headquarter companies, large healthcare facilities, et cetera.
Yeah, I would just point out that, David, your opinion of SBA, I, I wouldn't disagree with it, that it's extremely bureaucratic. But the fact of what Kurt just said, that we are the lender of last resort for these borrowers, which means they've gotten all their money from SBA, and they're out of it, and they're not going to give them any more, and then we're coming in and taking even more risk. And we, we know how that's worked out in a couple of cases.
Yeah, this doesn't sound like a good place to be at the bottom of the food chain.
Well, and, and again, that, that's, that was the whole experiment. That's why we did it, but to, for exactly the reasons that you were talking about. But if you think SBA is bureaucratic, imagine how much work it takes for us to have to vote on a loan, for everyone else, the business owners and them, to put a package together that has that kind of risk, that the banks aren't doing it, the federal government won't insure it, now they're coming to us.
It doesn't sound like a good idea.
Council, if I may, um, there's another aspect of, uh, economic development that is very powerful and meaningful to our businesses, and it's, it's a streamlined and expedited process. And that's where we have talked quite a bit about investing some of the, even our own resources in providing that expertise on staff, and that would be a great asset to, uh, commu, to businesses. And, and that is definitely something that will probably make or break a business in trying, deciding to locate a Rancho Cordova.
I couldn't agree with that more, having permitted so much retail. Like, I couldn't agree with that more.
I think what we've been doing is going back to what Kurt said at the very beginning, is we want to get out of the banking business.
Right.
And just work with the banks as we have been and continue to do everything we can to help. On that little grant like you're talking about, just to move something, that's one thing. But when you're talking about going from a, to a, what a bank does now, we're not a bank. We, uh, work with them. It's not, it's not our job to do that. That's, uh, we'll work, we are the people who help them get what they need, but we're not the bank. I really believe it was a worthy experiment, and it was well-done. Um, you know, you should hear Chuck talk and talk and talk about underwriting, and, and I challenge him, and he challenges me back, and I, because I'm like Garrett, I want to get the deal done, and he challenges me back, and he's right, you know? There's, there's a lot of risk out there, and Chuck's a wise man, so.
I, I.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
In the, in the context of this discussion, um, and sitting at Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council Board, one thing I've heard that we haven't really taken on is sort of a public announcement of what our incentives might be. So, the, the example I'll give is, uh, City of Sacramento and Centene. Um, to, in order to attract Centene, City of Sacramento came up with basically a formula. You bring us a certain number of jobs at a certain salary, and this is the, uh, the incentive we're going to give you. And I think the incentive takes a couple of different forms, but it's a publicly-known formula now. This is how it works. Um, and there are boundaries on there. You know, you have to have this many jobs, and they have to pay this much. There are probably other boundaries. But at least it's a known formula. If that organization was trying to market something with us, there is no such formula.
Right.
So, they could go to the next Centene and say, "Here's what the City of Sacramento's going to offer. Ranch Grove, we don't really know. It's, you got, it's a case-by-case basis." I don't know that that necessarily serves us well. I think we might be better to actually have something out there, maybe just match City of Sacramento's policy if it's reasonable, and say, "We're willing to do that too," because at least then it gives us sort of the second first-brush look, instead of automatically, we're in a second-place position, because City of Sacramento, they at least know what they're getting. Us, they're not sure.
Um, I would completely agree with that. I was part. I was part of a conversation with one of our local manufacturers, um, back in the spring, where they had gotten a Christmas card from what I think was Tyler, Texas, and, um, and it was handwritten. I mean, it's like, you know, writing to your relatives, and it very specifically said, you know, we will provide you $500,000 in relocation costs, we will provide you three acres of land, we will provide you this and this, and all you have to do is bring 65 employees in the first three years and commit to being here for X period of time. And it's, it's absolutely, as you said, it's like this, 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 and this is what we will do if you do this, this, and this. And it's, it's a good idea. I'm not sure I think the City of Sacramento has the best plan, but, um, it is definitely something that we should probably, should probably think about.
Is there a quick way that people who are working with us can market what we can do?
Yes.
That's the real question.
Yes. Well, and of course, we just had the wonderful comment from, um, the gentleman with Quick Quack tonight about the, the timeframe, which, which is a really good thing.
Lynn, I, I had another question though about lending. Um, I know Said Core has no longer. Um, what are our relationships with, like, opening doors, California capital, as far as making referrals, or, or are we at a point? Because I, I know when we started talking about the lending program shortly after Measure Eight got passed, maybe even before that, um, there seemed to be some sort of interest. Are, are we just not seeing that there's capital needs right now, that businesses are well-heeled enough to be able to access capital?
Um, what we've been seeing specifically is everyone's asking for grants, and usually when it comes to actually looking for loans, they're not interested, and that's one of the challenges. So that's, that's what we always refer out. We give them, you know, a list of like, here's, start with SBA, start with SBDC, and see where you go. And we've had some great working relationships with them in finding other alternative forms of lending, which we've also, um, done, uh, workshops here to like let folks know what's out there, but we just haven't seen any pushback of additional needs for capital beyond that.
So this is specifically a grant, not a rebate or anything like that?
So to Donald's question, it was about looking actually for loans for capital. The, what usually we have been receiving, when we say like, hey, we have this loan program, most of the businesses who have approached us said, we're not interested in a loan, we want a grant.
They just want money.
Right. But to her question, is it somebody coming in that's going to have to pay a $30,000 fee, and we're giving them a $25,000 grant to pay for the fee? What is the, what is the typical situation that, that you're, that somebody's asking for a grant? Is it to pay something that they would have paid us for anyways?
Um, and most of the cases, it's actually been for working capital for their business. So we had an, an ask recently where it was a small retailer, and, um, they had their opening costs, and we're basically looking for our funds to be able to cover some of their opening costs, be that equipment, um, inventory, help with, uh, first round of, um, salary, et cetera.
Interesting.
Yeah, because I, I think I would have assumed it's somehow paying for regulatory costs to get started.
Yeah.
But if it's not, that, that's really interesting.
With land development probably, but not with just a regular small business. Um, is this something that, um, these opportunity zones that are supposed to be coming would actually help with by giving some preferential, um, designation to parts of the city?
So the opportunity zones where they're currently located are primarily in most of our industrial, light industrial areas off of Horn Road and a small section of, uh, retail right there along Folsom Boulevard. But it's a small section, and right now, um, we haven't seen any interest, or there's been some interest in opportunity zones, but I don't think it's been really fully vetted out.
Okay. Did you get the, did you get the, um, the note about the webinar?
Yes.
Okay.
So that money could be used for that, sure.
Okay.
It's just not set up yet.
Traditionally, the, these opportunity zones are going to be in the most economically-challenged parts of communities, so it's our, it's exactly where you would think are our most economically-challenged neighborhoods.
Sure.
And it's mostly not, I mean, there's a little bit of industrial, but it's mostly houses, duplexes, and apartments.
Sure.
For the, for the two census tracts that I know of.
And quite frankly, because we have actually, um, increased our economy in our 15 years. It's the reason that our CDBG has shrunk routinely, and, uh, because as we lose those qualifying census tracts, because people are doing better, then we also lose that money. So, okay, um, a question for you all, or a question for city attorney. There's three resolutions. Can they be approved with one motion, or do we need to, uh, make three different motions?
Um, because they are, um, all agendaized? You're mic'd up? Oh, sorry. They can be approved all as one?
Okay.
Um, if, obviously if there's no modifications to.
Sure. Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
I'll move all three items. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you all very much, and kudos to you all for that perfectly gorgeous book that you gave us all a copy of. That thing is fantastic. It really, um, it just really sells Rancho Cordova beautifully.
And also I would, um, just remind David, Mr. Sander, that, you know, as far as GSAC, we're total communication day leaders. Probably not a week that goes by that Barry doesn't text me, hey, what about this? What about that? When these deals become viable, they are taken to the city manager's office, so they know that Rancho is willing to deal. We don't have a dollar amount, but Rancho is willing to deal, and we're with them constantly.
Super, thank you. That is a nice change from 20 years ago. Okay, moving on to council requests for future agenda items. Okay, then, um, if there's nothing else to come before the council, we are going to, um, adjourn in the memory of Catherine Marie Terry and all of the people who've been affected up in Paradise and the Chico area, and, um, and Justin Bieber, whatever.